Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, November 27th and 27th Board of Selectmen meeting agenda. We are gonna open the meeting to go into executive session. I'll read the full agenda when we come back at 7:00 o'clock, but we're gonna go into executive session to conduct strategy sessions regarding collective bargaining, negotiations with dispatch, union personnel, and then we will reconvene in open session. So, can I have a motion to go into executive session?
Move to go into executive session?
Second.
Motion made second, all in favor?
Aye.
Go call.
Yes.
Yes. Good evening, everybody. We're back from executive session. Now, we're going into our regular scheduled meeting. I want to introduce our chairman of the day, Dexter Griffin. He's gonna read the agenda.
So, at 7:00 PM, there is the citizens input. At 7:05 PM, the Eagle Scout recognition. At 7:10 PM, selectmen for a day citation. At 7:15 PM, introduce new veteran service officer. At 7:25 PM, the Kitchen Partners LLC request a change of...
DBA.
...of DBA name from the Kitchen to Union Straw. At 7:40 PM, the BOs review slash discussion slash vote to accept dispatch union MOU. At 7:50, Board of Selectmen review and vote to authorize chairman to sign MBTA commuter rail pilot program MOA. At 8:05 PM, there is the selectmen's update. At 8:10 PM, the town manager's update. At 8:15 PM, the assistant town manager's update. And there are several action items.
Can you lead us in the pledge? Right behind you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just so everybody knows at home, we participated this year thanks to Leah's suggestion at the PIC auction. Griffin was the winning person, well, Griffin's mom, or Dexter, I mean, sorry, the winning person. I, quick little story, I first met him on election day this past May, and he was walking up and down the sidewalk with a sandwich board that said Dexter for selectmen 2022.
2029.
Oh, 29, sorry. So, he's got his set site already, so welcome to tonight's meeting. So, with that, 7:00 citizens input. Anybody here for citizens input? Seeing none. 7:05 Eagle Scout recognition. If you guys wanna come up to the table. Mike, you wanna take this one?
Yes, I do. Follow your microphone?
Sure.
Thank you.
So, Matthew had his Eagle Court of Honor last weekend, and the Board of Selectmen was represented with the chairman. I wanted to be there, as well as our town engineer, as we were involved in supporting his great efforts for the town. I was not able to be there. I was down in New Jersey for the weekend. But we wanted to ask Matthew Gonzalez if he could come here and be specially recognized by the town, you know, for his efforts. So, dear Mr. Gonzalez, we wanted to pass along our warmest congratulations for the prestigious achievement of attaining the rank of Eagle Scout in Local Troop 32. Let it be clear to all that you have earned this promotion through your hard work and diligence in leading junior members of the Scouts and in supporting our community. We also wanted to share with you our sincerest thanks for the tireless effort and service you have provided the town and its residents on a consistent and dutiful basis, the pinnacle of which was your Eagle Scout project, which you demonstrated decisive leadership and organizational skills in coordinating, fundraising, fabricating, and installing the flags that now honor and complement our town common. The impact of your project touches hundreds of individuals on a daily basis, increasing awareness, raising patriotism to support those who have served or are serving our country at this time. It has been an incredible honor watching you develop into the individual you are today through your acts of service to become a true community organizer and patriot, as well as a leader. We wish you to know that it's been our distinct pleasure to have worked with you in supporting your project. Signed very respectfully, myself, Michael C. Johns, Director of Veteran Services, and Christopher Gallagher, Town Engineer for the town of Foxborough.
All right. Thank you, Matthew. Thank you. And like I said last Sunday at his ceremony, there is no better sight, driving up Central Street, seeing the 100-foot flagpole with the American flag, seeing all of the flags out around the common on those seven holidays, including the two Purple Heart flags. So, Matthew, mom and dad, congrats. Good job. Thanks, Mike.
Congratulations.
All right. 7:10, we're a little bit ahead of schedule. Dexter, you ready to read your citation?
Um, yep.
Right.
Whereas since the formation of the Commonwealth and the townships therein, many citizens have volunteered and have been selected democratically for the duty to represent their communities to the fullest of their ability. It is an important responsibility requiring temperance, fortitude, wisdom, and above all, a drive to do more than others for oneself. Whereas since the incorporation of Foxborough on June 10, 1778, these individuals known as selectmen have led the town through good and bad times. Through their guidance and stewardship of the public interest and safeguarding the values and traditions of this great community. Whereas selectmen for a day requires the prestigious presence of the designee to honorably attend, open, and run the meeting with his charismatic...
Charismatic.
Charismatic charm, clever wit, and wisdom beyond his years. Now therefore, the Foxborough Board of Selectmen hereby do proclaim Dexter Griffin as receiptment of selectmen for a day and the prescribed responsibilities related thereto. This citation is given under the seal of the town of Foxborough on the 27th day of November 2018.
Congratulations. Good job. Do we wanna do it like out front, a picture, or?
Actually, Chris, why don't you just have him come stand there between you and Jen? And we'll just all scoot in.
Yeah.
Just hold the picture.
Yeah, there you go.
That way you can get the seal.
Yeah.
You're gone.
Dexter, you get in my chair.
Stand behind me.
Smile bigger.
We got one. Good. Hiding his face.
You want that, Tom?
Yeah. Dexter, we can't see your hands and face.
They wanna see that smile.
Good job, Dexter.
Good job, Dexter.
Excellent.
What was that again, 2029?
2029, yep.
How old will you be then?
I will be 18, and I will be able to run.
You have my vote.
I think there are a few people who wanna run his campaign, right?
Yeah. Good job. All right. Still ahead of schedule, 7:15 introduction in the new veteran services officer. Ally, would you like to come up? Wanna take this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's my pleasure to introduce to you tonight Ally Rodriguez, who is our chosen candidate for the position of Veteran Services Director for the town of Foxborough. Obviously, big shoes to fill, but I think she'll do a very nice job. I'm very, very pleased to have her as a member of our staff. So, I'll just read the summary of Ally's, her resume, because I think it's actually very telling about what her skillset brings to the table. She is a skilled advocate for veterans and their families. She's multilingual disabled, multilingual disabled veterans outreach specialist with exceptional communication skills. Professional veterans advocate with a proven ability to motivate veterans to further succeed with positive outcomes concerning employment, health, and education. Excellent track record in referring veterans to adequate treatment facilities and how to navigate the veterans administration system. Serves as a vital member of the veterans community as a veteran employment council with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. That is her current role, where she serves as a Veterans Employment Representative for the Commonwealth of Mass out of Plymouth, Massachusetts. And I can tell you that this was a very competitive process. We had several very, very good candidates. Ally was able to top that list, and we're very, very pleased that she's able to join us. So, I present to you Ally Rodriguez.
Thank you.
Could I make a few comments?
Yeah.
So, I was very excited to meet my successor on Veterans Day, not just because I'll be soon relieved of my duties, but also because I found her to be a very energetic, highly motivated, and qualified candidate. I had the opportunity to review the 65 cover letters and resumes that came in, and, you know, it was exciting. There were a lot of highly qualified candidates, so I know that the interview and selection committee did not have an easy task. And when they got to the finalists, I know that any of them could've done the job. And Ally topped that list. I think we have a great track record here in Foxborough of hiring professionals who will lead the town well, and I know that we've done that again this time. Mary Beth, do you wanna?
Sure. Just a little bit about the process. We had 62 applicants, and we had a screening. We had Mike assist us with the screening, but we held an independent process so that Mike didn't have to feel compromised by that. So, Chairman Mitchell served on our committee, as well as our new Human Services Director, because the position is so linked to human services in the community, Mark Craig. We also invited a member of the Veterans Committee, who is also a Legion and VFW member, to attend but couldn't make it because of a family emergency. But we did a resume screen, a phone screen, and face-to-face interviews, and Ally quickly rose to the top of the final three and wowed us, and we're thrilled to have her here.
Thank you. I prepared a whole speech, and now I'm in the hot seat, and I forgot everything else. Seriously.
You're actually without words?
No, no, no. I'll say something real quick. It is an honor to be here and to serve Foxborough as your next veteran service agent. I do know I have big shoes to fill, but unless Mr. Johns wears stilettos.
Not last time I checked.
I do, I am an Army veteran and wife of a retired wounded warrior, so I have a vested interest in the veteran community, and my service to that community has spanned my entire adult life. I look forward to getting to know all of you. I look forward to working with all of you and to becoming an asset to the community of Foxborough. Thank you.
Chris, I know you served in the process too.
Yeah, it was, I'll definitely attest, there was a very good qualified pool of candidates. I'm totally confident in Ally's ability to go to the next level. You can fill his shoes, don't worry.
Thank you.
Yeah, and it was nice to see you at our Veterans Day ceremony.
Of course.
Get a good taste of how we do things as a town. Any before you from the board have anything?
Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
When is the official first date?
To January.
Yeah, January 1st. January 2nd.
2nd, yep.
Excellent.
So, it's interesting to note that Ally not only is a skilled veteran with lots of different backgrounds, but can speak, but she speaks, she's actually multilingual, which is interesting for us, for the town to, because obviously, as the world is evolving around us, folks with different languages, you know, do come into our offices from time to time, and so she can actually help with that situation. And I know that her client bases will be, will be multilingual at times as well, so we think that's actually an added service to the veterans community, so we appreciate the fact that you have those skills.
Thank you.
So, we appreciate you having, being here for that. Maybe you could just tell the board a little bit about some of the things you've been working on and why you think that's really helpful for the committee, not for the community, rather?
Working on as far as?
As far as, you know, helping veterans, what you've been doing with your current role.
Sure. So, what I do now is I focus on veterans that have significant barriers to employment, so those that are returning, those who have been incarcerated, those who have, who are homeless or below the income guidelines. They obviously wanna get back into the workforce, so what I do is, you know, meet with them. I do an entire comprehensive assessment, whether they're on Chapter 115 benefits or collecting unemployment. And then I take a look at their resume. If they don't have a resume, we create one together. I figure out what they like, what they don't like. We'll put it on a piece of paper, we'll clean it up, and then I help them apply to jobs within the community. If they get called for an interview, I help them with their interviews. If they do not have a suit, as a lot of veterans coming out of incarceration don't have interviewing attire, that's when I connect with nonprofits in the area, and I get the veteran and business suit, and they, they go and interview, and then if all goes well, knock on wood, they get employed. And then I just help them get on their way and improve their, their way of life. I do that with, oh my gosh, I have about 200 veterans that I see a month, so that's what I do.
And you have a family member serving?
I do. So, my oldest son, I know I don't look that old, but my oldest son is an infantryman in the Army, and he is in Alaska. Yep.
Excellent.
Great.
So, we wanna thank you for coming out tonight. This is an opportunity for the community to meet you, was particularly the board, of course, to see for the first time, so we're really happy that you're able to join us, and we'll be seeing you probably in another 30 to 35 days.
Yes, I'm very excited. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Great.
Thank you and your family for your service, too.
Thank you very much.
Have a great holiday.
All right. Next up, we're a little bit ahead of schedule. Is everybody here for the Kitchen Partners LLC request? Do you wanna come on up? Is that everybody?
That's everybody.
All right. Come on up. So, this is the Kitchen Partners LLC...
I'm going to slaughter tonight.
LLC request change of DBA name from the Kitchen to the Union Straw. Just state your name and your position for the record.
I'm Jennifer Meckler. I am one of the partners. I'm also the Director of Operations for Union Straw for the Kitchen Partners LLC. I will be your executive chef should any of you decide to come and eat dinner with us.
When?
Everybody's question.
I'll say it. When?
So, as you, as you know, my, my former partner has missed, misspoke that, that wonderful question many a time. So, we are, we've done our hiring, we are starting to train, and we are hoping in the next few weeks, provided that inspections all go as planned. So, we're getting there. We're pretty close.
So, there were a number of things that we're, we were waiting on, and the Kitchen is actually in, which is a good thing.
Kitchen's in.
Yeah.
Kitchen's in, yes. Hood is finished tomorrow, and...
Excellent. So, the building is in terrific shape. You did a beautiful job finishing it. Everybody here has clearly been anxious to see the doors open.
Yeah.
And so, we certainly want, we wish you nothing but the best and great success over there.
Thank you.
But I think, I just, so everybody knows that they have paid all their fees, so everything's up to date.
Everything is, yep.
And we're just anxiously awaiting the grand opening day. But they did have to come back to the board because they did officially change their name from, from the Kitchen to Union Straw.
Yep. The Kitchen Partners LLC has stayed the same, but we just, we wanted a, a name that was a bit more historic and had a little bit more backbone, since that building has been so many great things to so many people.
Right.
And the Kitchen just really didn't.
That's a really cool idea.
Fine. Fine. It's funny, 'cause I brought it, you know, I brought it to the table probably 18, 19 months ago, and it got voted down flat. So, then about a year ago, I brought it back to the table, got voted down flat. And then finally, I got some of the wives involved. Got my way. Took me a while, but, you know, you get to the drip method.
Good strategy. It worked.
I've been asked from, by other people, like menu, what type of menu you're gonna have?
Upscale American. So, we will do everything from a great appetizer menu, we'll do burgers, flatbreads, a good kid-sized menu, and then we'll do some really fun stuff. We're gonna do a braised short rib, we're gonna do a Parmesan crusted halibut. So, we'll have about two or three of each protein, so we'll do a pork chop, couple steaks, filet mignon, we'll do some lobster, we'll do some, I think we have three different kinds of mac and cheese on the menu, so a short rib, a lobster mac and cheese, and then a plain huge brunch menu. So, I come from a baking and a brunch background, so Saturday, Sunday brunch will be, be good for us.
Great.
Yeah.
So, are you the executive chef?
I am.
Great. Excellent.
I am, yep. I had four restaurants as of March, and I sold them all to, to come here and do this full-time.
Where were your other four restaurants?
Cohasset and Hangum.
Can I ask, you had a recent job fair? How did that work out for another restaurant?
It really, went really great. We had about 60 applicants. We filled up front of the house really quickly. Back of the house, we're still looking for some more chefs, but, you know, that's, that's always the case in this industry. This industry is currently experiencing its worst shortage.
Wow.
However, I have a girl that we, a local girl who grew up here, who's going to be our executive sous chef, and so she's awesome. She's still interviewing some great candidates. So, we've had a lot of, in the past couple of days, we've had a lot of good upswing on that, on that end, too.
Good to hear.
Yeah.
And the social media's up, and there's a lot of good things on there.
Yeah.
Picture the menu I have.
A lot of positive feedback on your social media.
Yeah.
So, that's great.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, we hired a great social media director who lives in town as well, and he comes to us from the Minnesota Twins. So, that's been really, it's been great, been positive. It's a really, it's, so far, it's a really strong team. Everybody we interviewed was fantastic. It was really hard to pick, you know, who we would keep and who we would turn away.
That's great.
All right. Any other questions by anybody? All right, so we need a motion?
I'm, I'm...
Oh, you have to recuse. I apologize.
I have in the past, sorry.
Yep. Move to approve the Kitchen Partners LLC request to change their DBA name from the Kitchen to the Union Straw in connection with the annual all alcohol license, the common vic license, and the seven-day entertainment license.
Second. Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
One recusing. Congrats.
Awesome. Thank you very much. We will see you soon.
Yes.
All right. Best of luck.
Thank you very much.
All right. Still ahead of schedule, 7:40 PM Board of Selectmen review discussion possible vote to accept dispatcher's union MOU. This is what we just reviewed in executive session.
You wanna summarize it, or just?
Yeah, we'll just give a quick summary for people.
Sure. This is a successor agreement. It's a one-year contract retro to July 1, 2018, with the anticipated end date of June 30, 2019, at which time Foxborough will be entering into regional dispatch with CEMRAC. The details of the executive session of the MOU are 2% COLA, that's retro to that date. There is a small training stipend of 75 cents per training, a shift differential, and the most important piece is a negotiated retention bonus to those dispatchers who stay on at the close of our, when dispatch goes dark and we transition to CEMRAC. So, there will be a $2,500 bonus for the, all the employees who are hired as of the time of the ratification of this agreement and who stay through June 30. So, it's not a lot of language. It's an important function. We are lucky to have very professional dispatchers here, and it's an important service to the community for officer safety and for our EMT and firefighter safety, so we're thrilled that we were able to get an agreement that lasts through June 30.
Anybody on the board have any questions? Seeing none, a little motion?
All right. Move to accept dispatch union memorandum of understanding.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Seeing none. All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, Board of Selectmen review and vote to authorize chairman to sign the MBTA computer rail pilot program MOA. Was Paige gonna be here for this, or are we ahead of schedule?
Yeah, I don't know that she is gonna be here. I think she is gonna join us, I do believe. I can check with her if you want, see if I can, she might be upstairs still.
Yeah, we'll do a couple of action items.
Let me just check and see if she's available.
All right. Just in case anybody has any questions that she could answer.
Sure. So, we have a bunch of action items to go through and handover them. The first one, move to accept a gift donation of $35 from anonymous for lockbox program at the senior center.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moved to approve tuition reimbursement for Officer Kenneth Fitzgerald in the amount of $2,055.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Moved to approve tuition reimbursement for Officer Scott Dian in the amount of $2,055.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor? Aye.
All right. The next one, move to approve Nerve Eye Incorporated Doing Business As Olive and Mint Ambrosia Weddings and Events for an early liquor license extension request of 11:00 AM for potential New England Patriots home playoff games on Sundays in 2019, Easter, which is April 21, 2019, Mother's Day, which is May 12, 2019, and Father's Day, which is June 16, 2019.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to approve Nerve Eye Incorporated Doing Business As Olive and Mint Ambrosia Weddings and Events Extended Closing of Hours on New Year's Eve to 2:00 AM, which is January 1, 2019.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion?
With the normal stop pouring of liquor at the normal time.
Yeah.
Yep.
Which we decided was 12:30.
12:30 till 40, last time.
I would just put in whatever the, the regular...
12:30 last...
Yeah, I thought so, too.
Yep. Okay. So, a motion was made, seconded with stipulation that alcohol service stops at 12:30. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to approve Lakeview Pavilion Early Liquor License Extension Request of 11:00 AM on Saturdays in 2019.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. The last one, it's a long one, so bear with me. Move to approve Orpheum Theater Seven One-Day Malt and Beverage Liquor License Applications for Junie B. Jones Musical and Whole Lot of Heart Concert on December 1, 2018 from 1:00 PM until 11:45 PM. That's the first one. Divas with a Twist on July, I'm sorry, on December 11, 2018 from 6:00 PM to 11:45 PM. Jim Slattery and Big Rock Finfish on December 28, 2018 from 6:00 PM to 11:45 PM. Beatles Tribute Band in Studio 2 on December 29, 2018 from 6:00 PM to 11:45 PM. 36 Red on January 5, 2019 from 6:00 PM to 11:45 PM. Todd Barry Live Comedy Show on January 26, 2019 from 6:00 PM until 11:45 PM. And the Foxborough Firefighter Comedy Night Out with Michael Pettit on February 16, 2019 from 6:00 PM until 11:45 PM.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion?
Just under discussion. I need to recuse myself being on the board of the Orpheum.
I have some questions for Mr. Hickey. Where'd he go?
He's here at seven. Is he outside? If there's questions, I'll send in the audience.
Yeah. Mr. Hickey, sir, we just read-
I was just introducing myself to one of our newest business partners, so.
There you go. We just read all of the liquor license, and then we, David had some questions.
Sure.
At our, at our last meeting, we approved some, some one-day licenses, and this goes back basically from the beginning. You know, the previous board and this board have been very supportive of, of your efforts at the Orpheum, and it's great. But now this will make thirty-three one-day licenses that we, we've granted. Is there, is there a bigger plan here?
Great question. So the thirty for this year and then a few for next year. So the reason why you'll have licenses before you're going through the middle of February, and that's shooting us out, I think, twelve weeks. The process for getting the annual license is, my understanding, a six to eight, ten-week process. So we went out twelve weeks just to be safe. Working with your office, Pam Rich has been phenomenal. She contacted the state ABCC commissioner, and the way it works, and you may have already gone over this, and I apologize if I'm hitting it again, but you can apply for one-day licenses if you're an organization such as us. You can apply for an annual license, but you cannot apply for a one-day license while you have an annual license pending. So that's why I've submitted, and my board, and we have submitted seven one-day licenses to carry us through February 16th, as soon as those are awarded, if they're awarded. The next step is to apply for the annual 2019 license. What we're going to do is, I'm still shy, received two of the remaining five notarized core reforms from each of my board of directors today, so I anticipate getting the others tomorrow or Wednesday. As soon as I get those, we're gonna be applying for the annual. I can't apply for any more one-days while the annual is going, so that's why you have the number of them in front of you tonight.
Right, and it's, it's not a question of whether we're grantees or not. Like I said, we're supportive. But we just wanted to make sure, because we've asked this question a few other times, and it was, yeah, we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it. But it's, it's great that there's a, there's a light at the end of the tunnel, and there's a, there's an end in sight. Because as other license holders have to abide by, you know, the rules and regulations of the town, and by doing one-day licenses, you can kind of get around that as far as tip certification and everything else. So that, that was the only reason for the question. I just wanted to see what the, what the big picture was.
Absolutely. And, and just to address that, we are treating the, well, all of our servers are tip certified. The regulation is within thirty days of being awarded the annual, as you point out. My three main ones, myself and my other two main people are also tip certified, and we do keep a tip log even though we don't have to. So we are, we are working forward as far as being compliant when that day comes, so. The good news is that the architect wondering is just about finished, our upper bistro, which we have to have a schematic for, that is done. I've shared the preliminary with the building department, and I've spoken with the health department, I have the health application as well. It all has to come in as one big pile, so we're ready with the three-pronged ABCC, board of health, and building permit.
And you do know what happens once you get your license, right? Fox cares?
Oh, of course. But of course.
You've got to get that plug in early.
Fox cares is very important. Thank you.
All right, so the motion was made, it was seconded, further discussion. There's one other thing that I just want to either put into the further discussion of the motion or clarify. So I always thought the rule on a one-day license is, on the day of the event, you bring the alcohol in, you have the event, the alcohol leaves. So Chief Baker just says at a minimum, I want to impose the condition that all alcohol is brought in and brought out. So I mean, I think that is standard operating procedures anyways, right?
That's right.
So just as long as that-
Will we comply by that?
Yeah, as long as we're complying with that, then. Okay, so the motion was made, seconded, some discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. One abstaining? All righty.
Thanks very much.
Appreciate you, Bob.
All righty, so those are all the action items, right Leah?
I just lost board docs.
Yeah, that was, that was the last.
It was.
Good timing. All right. Seven fifty, Board of Selectmen review and vote to authorize Chairman to sign MBTA Computer Rail Pilot Program MOA. So we all got this. Bill, do you want to just give everybody at home a brief and-
Sure, I'll give you an introduction to this issue. Before you tonight is, is a document entitled memorandum of understanding, memorandum of agreement by and among Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority, Massachusetts Department of Transportation, Foxborough Realty Associates LLC, and the Town of Foxborough for Foxborough Computer Rail Pilot Service. This agreement is the enabling document that allows all, all parties to proceed with the process of, of doing the pilot program that has been, that was preliminarily approved by the, the F, the Financial Management Controlable, FMCB, of the MBTA back about a year and a half ago. During the past, during that timeframe, what's happened is that there's been a lot of planning going on, a lot of discussions in, in preparing for that day. The plan at this point is that the, that the service would actually start, begin to take, take place on May 20th of 2019. That was pretty consistent with what had been introduced from the very beginning. It'll be, it'll be the spring of 2019, before the service would actually be off the ground. For, just to be clear, for where the service would begin, it actually begins at Gillette Stadium, at the, at the station, what is, will be soon called Patriot Play Station. It will then, then proceed down to, down the Framingham Secondary Line to what is known as the, as the, just drew a blank, the, the Fairmont Line, which will then proceed into Boston and, and end up at, at South Station. The service is going to be a seven train a day service, three in the morning, three at night, and then one in the middle of the day. I'll let Paige speak to that a little bit more, and perhaps Dan can speak to that a little bit more in detail. But the reason why this is, this is really a four or five-part agreement is the fact that the Town of Foxborough has to be named as, as the host community, because we, it has to be, it has to be starting from a community as a host, and as such, we are named as a party. You will note in the agreement that there are, there are very little responsibilities that the town has with respect to this agreement, because we don't own any of the, the pieces. In other words, we don't own the rail, we don't own the trains, we don't own the parking lots, we don't own any of those major, major moving parts, if you will, about this agreement. Obviously, this was under quite a bit of discussion about two years ago, and so this was heavily considered by the community, and then ultimately, there were a number of considerations that were made to the, by this board to, as part, as part of the conditions that we wanted to see happen as part of the, as part of the startup of the program. A number of those have been addressed, and actually, self-americally addressed by the state. The state actually wrote in a letter from Astrid Glenn back in 2016 that there would be no train staying there overnight, there would be no, there would be no impact to the fee, and there was, there was one other one. No what?
No at grade crossings.
No at grade crossings, right. Well, so, so the train is not expected to go any further than, than this train station at Foxborough, at Gillette Stadium. So it is therefore not going to go across any of the grade crossings that are located actually in Foxborough. So I, the, the further thing, and I think this is a major concern too, is that now that this, the CXX line is, that line, the, the lane, the secondary, Framingham Secondary Line is being used by freight, you know, would that, would that impact the commuter rail service? And it was, as was, as is being constructed as we speak, is what is, is a, is a work, is a ride around, ride around rail, which it actually goes around the train station. So the train would actually be parked at the station, and then the, if there was, if there was a freight train that needed to go by, they could go by it without, without being held up by, by the commuter rail line. So that's being done as we speak, that's under construction now. So I think I've addressed all the, the major points or concerns that had been raised, but certainly, the board is, is free to, to raise any other issues or questions you may have. But this, it's important to note that this is for the pilot rail service. This is not the final memorandum of understanding, it's, it's for, it's to enable the pilot service to go forward. There'll be eleven-month period of, of service and then reviewed at the following, the eleventh month. There's also interim points where they're supposed to be, I believe it's after six months and after ten months, there's going to be review periods, interim review periods, where information will be reported back to this board and to the, and to the FMCB as well, because they were interested in knowing how it's progressing, how, how the service is doing. At the end of the day, if the, if, if it's warranted and, and the service is successful, then it'll be before the FMCB for consideration for, 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 full, full grade service, full, full commuter rail service. Obviously, the Board of Selectmen will, will weigh in on that process as well. So I think I've covered all the major points. I defer to-
Yeah, Paige, do you want to come up to the table, and maybe Dan too, in case anybody has any questions?
To address any further questions.
Anything that you didn't cover on that?
No, I think Bill did a good job. I think one misconception, or I want to make sure it's clear, is the, what is it called, the runaround track?
Yes.
The runaround track actually was associated with the purchase of the, the line from CSX back in 2014, or on about-
Twenty fifteen.
Twenty fifteen. It had nothing to do with this commuter rail, so the work you're seeing out there isn't because of the pilot. One of the constraints of this pilot is that we're working with existing stock, existing staff. You know, the key to pilot is not to go and jump into a whole lot of capital and other investments. So this is, we are, that's why we are seven trips only, because we have to work with all the existing lines and all the existing rolling stock and make sure we're not causing an investment prior to commitment. Did I forget anything?
No. One question I had, so if, if the pilot is a success, when does the, the actual daily commuter rail start? Will it be another year from then, or will it be immediately, or?
I don't know that that, we definitively know that answer, Mr. Chairman, but I think the expectation is that the pilot would probably continue until a full service schedule could be created. So it would be sometime, you know, six months to a year, I'm guessing, after the pilot program concluded that a, a full service could be initiated. But I think the pilot program would continue in its form, it just wouldn't be called a pilot anymore.
Okay.
Apparently, once they get to eleven months, or it, once they hit a year, I think it's the federal standards consider it permanent service, so that's why there's a cutoff there. They want to make sure that if, you know, for some reason this was a failure, you know, they want to be able to cut it off without having to go through all sorts of regulatory issues to discontinue service.
Okay, so at that either six-month mark or ten-month mark, when there's meetings and discussion on, hey, this is going bad, or this is going good, at what point after the eleventh month can the town kind of weigh in, or give feedback, or say, hey, if this is going to be permanent, we need this, this, and this, or?
I, I think at any point during the entire process, we, we are open and welcome to, to town and to public input. So as we get into the pilot program and situations occur, happy to, to try to address those. I, I know Bill didn't bring it up, but back in February 2017, when we were last in front of this board, having this discussion, we committed to doing traffic studies and noise studies. I will tell the board that those are scheduled to, to start in the spring, this coming spring, so that we have that baseline information in advance of the pilot program. And then we'll follow up with that, with the follow-up study after the pilot has been initiated. So we'll have a baseline, and then we'll see what, what noise and traffic comes from that.
Anybody on the board have any questions?
Yeah, I think I read somewhere at one point that, I know we requested Foxborough having a seat at, at any review committee, or is, is that a possibility, or has that been thought about, one way or the other?
I will leave, I, I would say that we've met for the last year and a half every other Thursday with the MBTA and Mastat, and between the town manager and the town planner, they have been present at every one of those meetings. But it is, it is a meeting that if, if additional people from the Town of Foxborough, or, or the board would like to attend, we can obviously set that up and, and make that possible. And if there's a committee that, that the town would like to put together, I'm sure that we're happy to work through that.
That was one of the things that the board had indicated, that there'd be some sort of a review committee. The question you have to ask yourselves is, do you want to create a separate committee, or do you want to create an existing, or use an existing committee to oversee those, those particular issues? The, the key thing is to determine what's the mission of that group. What would be their, their key mission statement, and what, what would be their charge? I think that's something we, we actually wrestle with ourselves, is say, okay, what are they going to do? Because the information is going to come to you anyways.
And I think, Dan, you answered my question more than anything. I don't, I don't know if I necessarily was thinking about a committee of us, but the fact that Paige or, or you are present is-
Well, they've been very open to our presence, and, and if anybody from the board wants to come and, and, and attend those meetings, I don't attend all of them. I mean, Paige has been very-
I could say they're very technical. I mean, that's why I say things like rolling stock now. Because I sit there, I mean, they literally are, I mean, these are engineers talking about how to move. The real problem with this is just, you know, the more operational part of it, you know, that the lines are there, and there's other factors. But it's been interesting, eye-opening. I'm now a transportation professional. But I do think the real question of oversight, and sort of, I think also to Chris's point, is sort of, as we get to the six-month point, and we really figure out how to evaluate this, I think that's when you're going to want to have a voice at the table. And, and in their letter on, in dissent, back in December of 2016, the DOT did say they can commit to a midpoint valuation, a formal one, nor a committee, but they said only because this is the first, we're really their first pilot. So we're actually sitting there as well. As we're doing this, we're saying, okay, you know, these are the milestones we need to create. They weren't opposed to it, I think they were just saying, yeah, we're, we're doing this without, you know, we're doing this the first time. So I think it will be up to us as a town to, and, you know, and I could certainly, I do advocate, and Dan could speak to that, to make sure that, you know, if a permanent decision is coming on board, I think that's what the concern is more about, is, you know, layovers and permanent service and such. I think the pilot is relatively innocuous, you know.
But I think we truly look at this from the craft group as, as a public-private partnership. And, and I, I would like to come back quarterly and maybe speak to the board with Paige and just give an update. And I think that, that might serve your purpose, if you'd like to see it. But I think that way we can kind of download the last three months and what we're looking towards the next three months as, as we move forward.
Yeah, I don't think we need to form any committee right now, but I think we need to be thinking about at the, the six-month, seventh, eighth-month mark, what do we want to do, what kind of issues have we seen or heard, and kind of go from there.
I think, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, is, I think this is the, really the primary purpose of, of a pilot, is to really identify the issues that are biggest concerns to, to the residents and to the people living in the neighborhood, and, and to the concerns overall, where are the impacts? And I think the fact that we have commitments on, on doing the studies, on the traffic studies, the noise studies, the, all the different pieces that go into that, and, you know, and our door's going to be open, and, and our phones are going to be open too, to anybody who wants to call and say, hey, can you look at this? You know, this is a concern that we're seeing. And I think that's important to know that, so that we can, we can address it as soon as possible, rather than later.
Jim, do you have a question?
Yeah, I generally concur with what's been said, and I, I think the craft group is moving this forward and doing everything that they said that they wouldn't do. I, I think, I think if you look at the MOU that was put in front of us, okay, it has the, the four players that are in there, the MBTA, the, the Mass DOT, Foxborough Realty Associations Frail-
Just really-
In the town, okay, so those are the four entities. If you look at the MOU, it basically protects three out of the four entities, because when they look at the pilot program, they're looking at ridership, they're looking at other towns to see increase and decrease. And they're evaluating the pilot program based on the success of the riders. And in there's the monetary, what you're going to charge. It doesn't say anything about the town. I mean, we're going to sign it, but there's no checks and balances for the Town of Foxborough. What I would like to see is, when we talked about this two years ago, the selectmen had some suggestions, some criteria. the selectmen had some suggestions, some criteria. The DOT pushed back with the letter at our second meeting. So the things that we asked for, some of them were addressed in the second, in the letter before our second meeting when we revoked it. But no overnight parking of trains during the pilot. So the DOT or the MBTA basically said they won't incur-
They won't, they concur.
Be cognizant that what they did say in the letter was, after the pilot's over, they cannot make guarantees and there may most likely be overnight parking, to which the craft said, work with us, you have our word. If there's an overnight parking, we'll house it. So the detriment to the neighbors of noise and vibrations and all that stuff is addressed.
And we'll, yes, we'll work with the town.
Yeah. So the second item was creation of an oversight committee in conjunction with the MBTA and the Mass DOT. At the time, two years ago, we didn't know what, if it was going to be five members or maybe it was going to be the planning board or a select group of people. If you look at the letter that Mass DOT sent, they said, not quite there. It's not, we don't know what it's going to be yet, but we're immediately working on it in writing. That was two years ago. Okay, they said two years ago, they have that evaluation criteria in writing.
They do. They actually do. But it's more to the sort of their purpose than yours.
Exactly. So to the point where we can maybe wait to six months to see how it's going, I disagree with that because if you're going to do any baseline studies, you're going to look at day one or the day before day one and look at the baseline for noise and for traffic. So waiting six months is too late for that. And I know you're saying you're going there, you're going to do the reports. But the difficulty I have is, we haven't seen this in two years. This came back to us. I mean, maybe you've been working with them and going to meetings. We had to go back and look at meeting minutes and we had to go back and struggle to find documentation to get to this point. And it came as, as late as today to get stuff. Is it too problematic if you're doing traffic studies and you're doing the evaluation to put something in writing so next year, we don't have to go back and revisit what we did today or two years ago? And again, going back, the memorandum of understanding makes sense for three out of the four entities, but it certainly does not make sense for Foxborough on the mitigation in the impact. Aside from the businesses and bringing, you know, commercial, that stuff's a benefit for Foxborough. I think we discussed that. But any type of committee and evaluation, we've waited two years, it's going to be starting, the construction's already there, and we haven't even discussed this at the board. So aside from what Foxborough Realty, the Fraal Group, MBTA, and Mass DOT is doing, the town has done nothing on this. If we've been going to the meetings, we haven't heard it. And if you've been going to the meetings, I think it's more technical on rails and distances. But I would like to have this board have a little more input on how to protect the area of butters, the neighbors, the trap, in context to what's going on in South Foxborough. And I, right now is a complete disaster with every neighborhood that's down there with a mile and a half track, granted it's CSX. But when, if and when that happens because of something that we're doing now on this side of town, I don't want to be looking at everybody and saying, well, CSX is a federal group and they're exempt. CSX has nothing to do with Mass DOT. They're supposed to be side by side with this. You know, if and when things happen, we're going to be looking at and saying, we're kind of silly for not even talking about it. So two years of this whole thing, no one's even brought this up until today.
So I, yeah, go ahead.
We spent two years discussing this.
Who has?
This board and the previous board. There was a series of at least six public meetings. There was meetings with the FMCB-
Oh, no, believe me, I was, I was part of that. But to get to the point where we agreed we're going to do the pilot-
To get to this point where we agreed to the pilot program.
Yep.
And we, we put those, those conditions in place. I think we need to see the pilot program in, in place to see what's going to happen. And I don't think you can, you know, what's going on in South Foxborough is, is a complete debacle. I mean, that's, what CSX is doing is ridiculous. But I don't think you can compare CSX and MBTA if, and the craft group that are really trying to get a sustainable train service to the town of Foxborough. I think they're going to do everything in their power and I think the MBTA is going to do everything in their power to make sure that, that it works. Because, you know, you go to the, you go to those hearings, those public hearings with the FMCB, I'll tell you, no stones left unturned. Everybody has a voice at that table. Everybody has, has an opinion. We got a lot of support from a lot of different people, from Secretary of Transportation to Jay Ash, and those relationships have helped the town of Foxborough greatly, even on the roundabout on Forbes Crossing. So I think we've, we've had enough hearings on this. We knew this was coming, we just didn't know when. The MOU hasn't changed. It's almost identical to the-
Yeah, that's why I'm not having an issue with the MOU. What I'm bringing up is, we agreed to have a pilot evaluation program, a written evaluation program. Who's, what are they going to look at? Who's going to do it? When are they going to do it? Where is that? Not part of the MOU. We haven't discussed it. Where is that?
Are you asking for the town to do, put together a-
Well, I'm asking for us to follow what we decided a year, two years ago, when we had, so I stopped halfway, but no overnight parking in the trains. It seems like it's addressed. Creation of an oversight committee in conjunction with the MBTA, the board will need to give some thought as to what the charge of the committee will be, who will serve on it. That's just not done. No at-grade crossings in Foxborough. It was agreed to. And that's in writing from the DOT letter. Written parameters for the pilot program evaluation at the six months and 10 month period, not done. DOT said they were going to have it done two years ago. But again, I think that's their parameters, not ours. So that's not done. Get a confirmation that there won't be additional fees for Foxborough. I think that may have been in the DOT letter.
Right. Yes, it was in the DOT.
I'm sorry, and the last one, traffic study on the impacts of North Street. So those are all done. That's great.
Which the craft group has committed to doing. So we have, we have a six month window. Perform a committee. We can get the parameters from, from Mass DOT-
From DOT's parameters.
On the evaluation of the, of the pilot program. And we can, we can look at those, those same metrics and look at our own metrics and see what we want to see. But we have, we have six months. I don't think we need to, you know, wait another, you know, two months to come up with that. I think it, we're almost better off authorizing the chairman to sign it. That starts the clock ticking and then we have to do it.
Yeah, maybe reading me wrong, David, I'm not saying put the brakes on this. I'm saying for two years, the to-do items have not been done.
Everything that hasn't been done is formed in the committee.
Okay, so, so can we take some effort and put this in writing of, here's the thoughts in the committee, here's the parameters, here's what we want to do and have a discussion on it?
So happy to do that, Jim, but I just, I just don't know what the board wants here because it's, it's something that we need to discuss collectively. What is it that the board wants for a committee, number one? What would be the charge of that committee? And what is it that you're going to try to look at? I think it's perfectly fine to come up with a, you know, a mixture of people from the community, a mixture of boards, or even a separate committee altogether if you want. That's entirely your prerogative to do that. I just don't know what is exactly that you want, what you want to study. And we can use the basis of what, you know, the state has come up with, and we have six months to do that. I mean, we can, we can still come up with that now. The state took some time to actually develop that, those parameters, because right now, we don't know what those parameters would be.
And just so you know, we are, I mean, there is baseline information being developed. I mean, the FMCB do require baseline counts on all the stations. So those are the things, it's very hard to figure out. I suppose you guys would be looking at impacts or something and that's something you'll have to figure out. And that's what I think Bill's talking about. Because, you know, the metrics are passengers and financials and that sort of thing. I mean, that's-
That's exactly my point. The MOU is the matrix of the dollars in the passengers and the rideability and the success of that. What I'm concerned about is the impacts to not only North Street, but to the whole area. The vibrations, the diesel smells, all that stuff. Why can't we take some time and discuss it at the board, put some parameters in writing, work with the craft organization who may have a lot of that stuff in their to-do list that they're going to do? But we haven't done it. That's my-
Right, because you still have time. You have six months to do that. So if you want to do that, and you still have the time to do a baseline study if you want. So I guess we're not saying we're not going to do it. It's just the fact that we wanted to see what the state was going to come up with first and then we can actually, we can work off of that as a baseline effort.
One question, so this is the, the MOU for the pilot program. So when it's a success and it goes to the next stage, is there another agreement, a final agreement that we all will have to sign?
The short answer is yes.
Okay. So we do, we do have time and bargaining power?
I think what is a good positive thing out of this though, Jim, and also this is a significant difference between the CSX situation and this, is that you have the ability to say no at some point during this or to say, look, this is not working. You have, because you have input. We had no really input into that situation at all. I mean, that's a federal line and it's a, for a federal company that's pushing that train through there. This is a test process to make sure that we have input into this, which is really significantly different from what happened.
Yeah, and I agree. And I am supportive. I voted for it. But when you say this isn't working, how do you know it's not working unless you have a plan before it starts to evaluate it again? So if your, your traffic goes from a level C to a level F, you've got something concrete. If you don't do the baseline study, it's a trick that the developers do. The traffic's always been that bad. You don't have the information when you started.
So I think-
And there's not a lot of time to put all this together.
I guess, yeah, I guess the question is, what would those parameters be?
That's my, that's my question. And I think that, I think we have to discuss it and come up with that either at this board or have selectmen present on a subcommittee to figure out what the parameters are. Because I thought, I honestly thought it was going to be covered in the MOU, but there's nothing in there about that. So.
Do you have something you want to add?
No.
So I think the steps would be, if the board authorizes me to sign this, we get this signed, we start working on what do we want to do for a committee?
What kind of measurements you want to look at?
Yeah.
What's your-
I would say the best bet would be to have input from our board on that committee, but have the committee, you know, made up of their neighbors or whoever, maybe people from the planning board. I don't know. We can maybe work on that at our next meeting. Just kind of, everybody kind of think of what kind of impact they want to measure.
Through the chair. Dan, when do you anticipate starting your baseline study?
We had wanted to do it probably after, you know, the dead of winter. So we thought if we started it in early March, we would probably have it by late March, mid-April, which is a month in advance of the intended start of the pilot. And then we would, we haven't scheduled the follow-up, but you know, we, we would assume there would be some ramp-up time before people got comfortable coming to Patriot Place Station at Foxborough. And so probably two or three months later, we would have the follow-up study.
Do you have any baseline studies on a stadium event?
Absolutely.
Be interested in comparing a stadium event to a communal event versus just a regular, ordinary day, day in the life.
I think we can absolutely add that.
I think, I think, Jim, I think part of it is to develop a timeline as part of that.
Well, yeah, there's no doubt. I mean, there's, there's people that do that for a living. They look at traffic and impacts and, you know, morning peak, afternoon peak, weekends, you know, which is every single day versus, you know, a handful of stadium events.
Vanessa Associates is lined up to do that, that workforce.
Jim, if you have suggestions on how, on parameters that you think are good or any, any member of the board for that matter, you know, send them on to us and we'll try and put something together for your next meeting.
Yeah, and try to think of committee and how it should be formed and-
We're certainly open to that.
Okay.
All right. Motion?
Move to authorize chairman to sign MBTA commuter rail pilot program memorandum of agreement.
Second.
Motion made. Second. Any further discussion? I think none. All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone. All right. Selectmen's update. Dexter, you got anything?
No, really anything.
No, no.
You think great plans for the weekend?
I'd like to get something.
All right, Doc's got something.
I would like to congratulate Coach Jack Martinelli and the 2018 Foxborough High School Football Team for a truly magnificent win at Fenway Park last Tuesday.
For the ages.
It was a lot of fun to be a part of. It was a lot of fun to be there. The crowd was great. Foxborough beat Mansfield in triple overtime and it was a great victory for the boys, great victory for the coaching staff.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
That's great, great. And I just want to, on that too, thank Jim and Mike and the whole veterans group for delivering the turkeys and other things to veterans. And it's a nice tradition to have. And then I didn't make it back from my trip last week in time for the common lights and all the festivities, but I heard that was standing room only up there. So great job by JC's Recreation, any of the other groups and people.
East Chapel, I think, participated this year. We've got, there's a few-
Alliance.
A few other, Alliance. So this has become more of a collaborative expanded, expansion of that. So-
Nice.
And we're looking to do more in the year, year to come too. So it should be, should be good.
Yeah, I heard it was, it was a great event. Even woke Doc up.
Santa coming in on the fire truck.
And then just one last thing I want to mention, and we'll have time to mention again, but back to veterans. On December 7th, the Foxborough High Swim Team is putting on a dinner for veterans at the VFW, 6:30, right Mike?
That's correct.
Yep, free to local veterans. So there is, I think it's online somewhere. It's the high school swim team putting it on. It's nice of them to do that.
And I just want to, on behalf of the board, pass along our condolences to Gordon Green, whose wife Patricia passed away. So condolences go out to him.
Anybody else have anything? All right, town manager's update.
So I'll just be, I'll be brief. First of all, I hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving, a great holiday. And the holiday season is upon us. So lots to do over the next, it's going to be pretty compact, next three or four weeks. We've got a lot to do. Budget process is well underway. We're trying to finalize our budgets and have everything ready by the first week in December. Get going for the, for those hearings. Just to follow up on the, on November 19th meeting, I think this is the first opportunity we've gathered since the meeting that we had last week with the residents up on the Spring Street, Colony Street area relative to the CSX train situation. And I actually have prepared a, a letter that I sent to the board just to send, and I actually changed so you could all sign it. So that as, as board members, along with myself, and we'll send it out together to, to the residents of that area. It's an update.
Do we have that tonight to sign?
Yeah, you do. I gave, I gave, I have it. Amanda has a copy of it, so you can sign it and we'll get it out to folks. The situation, there was an article in the, in the Sun Chronicle about that this morning, which I think pretty well captured the discussion that took place. We are continuing to have more conversations. I had a further conversation with Representative Barrows and Senator Feeney this afternoon. And, and the wheels are turning. So we're getting, we're getting some reaction out of CSX as well as Mass Coastal and DOT to try and, try and help rectify the situation. WBZ reached out to me as well today to speak about this issue. And so it's getting a lot of press and a lot of attention suddenly. And WBZ TV actually reached out for a comment today, but which I declined because obviously I'm here. But, but it's getting a lot of attention, which it should, because it's something that has really, it's been, it's been a real impact on those, on those residents up there. And then just for everybody's education, there were 36 instances during the past year where we've had rail, rail crossings blocked because of the trains and the length of the trains has really impacted that area. The change, my primary changes that occurred is in the past several years is that the length of the trains has increased rather dramatically. That's, 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 that's a function of the fact that the economy is actually doing, plugging them around really well. There's a real need for train service. The secondary issue is that CSX has, did a major layoff of about 4,000 employees during the past year. the past year, which really, I think, impacted that situation as well, so they have fewer people working their train sets. And that in itself is problematic, because there's not enough people, in our opinion, to actually manage that situation. It causes delays on the system rather extensively, delays in some cases, which is a public safety concern, as well as a nuisance to those people living in that neighborhood. So we're continuing to push that issue forward. We've indicated that we, if we don't get any kind of satisfaction, we will certainly push forward with a file, with some sort of legal action prior to Christmas. And we made that well-known at the meeting last week, it was re-edified in the paper this morning, and we're standing by that position, unless obviously something changes rather to help the situation along. So we're keeping the channels of dialogue open with CSX and the state and Mast Coastal to try and help us with the situation, and hopefully they will be more responsive to the situation as it has occurred. So that is the latest situation as we see it. We continue to be supportive of the residents in the area, and do whatever we can to try and rectify the situation. That's all I have for now, I also do want to congratulate the football team, that was an amazing win. The only one that topped out was the college one that went to seven overtimes with the weekend, which was outrageous, but three overtimes is extraordinary, so congratulations to the football team for that, that performance.
Mary Beth?
I'll keep it brief. The transition continues, Mike and I continue to work together. Our latest project is civil service, and trying to figure out the forms and process and all of that, doing that together. We're wrapping up contract negotiations, we hope, with, we completed tonight, you completed and signed dispatch, and we're close with the library as well, we met with them today. And tonight, the personnel board met, they hadn't met since April, and we have another policy in front of them, and looking forward to our new member, Heidi Crofta's involvement. And as we speak this evening, there's a promotion ceremony at Public Safety for new Sergeant Collins, want to wish her congratulations, wish her well. So as a result, we're working with the chief on promotions, and then we will be having at the end of the week, an assessment center for the position of fire chief. So we've got a lot, a lot going on.
Mike, anything for you to add?
Along those same lines, we do have a number of recruitments going on. The assistant assessor position, I believe we had 140 applications that has closed, and now we're moving into the interview phase of that. Our treasurer collective position is open through the middle of December, the assessment centers, Mary Beth mentioned, we are working on our fire collective bargaining agreement, as well as the, wrapping up our police collective bargaining agreement. And we've also got two other jobs advertised, and those are for the dispatchers, part-time and full-time dispatchers, you know, as we move to June 30th to wrap up the year before we go into Semrec, as well as water technicians of a number of different levels, so those are all on our website, and that's all I have.
Okay. I just want to thank Dexter, great job tonight. Now you have one final mission, Dexter, you know what it is?
What?
To close the meeting.
Move to your...
Second.
Move.
All in favor?
Good night, everybody. Well done, good job, Dexter.